...this afternoon to our July 8th, the town council regular meeting. And also like to welcome those who are watching by way of the internet. And also those of you who are standing, if you would like to go out in the main event out there, the microphone's on out there and the TV's on out there, you're welcome to stand or you're welcome to go out there where you've got to sit. I'm just giving you an option.
Also, the fire marshal's giving everyone the thumbs up to expand the crowd in the main event.
Yeah, okay. All right, we've got that part out of the way. We'll go on and look at the calendar. On the calendar here, we got coming up July, Friday, July 18th, the Mountain Street Dance from 6:00 to 9:00. You got a good crowd. Didn't use the last, that was the first one you had, correct? Was the first one? And the weather went that way?
It's okay, it's not bad.
It usually calls for rain though. And then Tuesday, July 22nd is our other regular town council meeting of this month of July. Okay, I have that out of the way. Announcement, Anthony, you have an announcement?
Yeah, I have an announcement. As you know, I'm the chair of the French Broad River MPO and the French Broad River Metropolitan Organization is seeking your input on its 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan update, which identifies road, bicycle, pedestrian transit and rail projects that will help the region. And that public comment and public meeting will be here tomorrow from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And generally, this Haywood County is not representative well in public comment. It would be fantastic, it's just a drop-in. You can drop in anytime from 4:00 to 8:00 to give your comment and see the plans for the region. So please just drop in, see the plans, make a public comment. And I'll be here probably from 5:00 to 7:00.
Anyone have any questions for Anthony? Okay, move on to our public comment. Our public comment, I will give you, all you have to do is come up and give your name and the town attorney will be keeping a three-minute time limit on the, right here, you can actually look over and see how much time you have left. As many, as folks as we have tonight, we ask that you please honor that. And so we'll go ahead and ask our town attorney to call our first person up.
Yep. We have over 20 individuals sign up for public comments, so please bear that in mind as we make your comments. Three minutes, that's all. So the first one is Reverend Mary Clayton McLaughlin.
I want to thank the Waynesville Town Council for allowing me to speak tonight and for providing logistical support for Haywood Pride on Main, a delightful event that in my opinion is a great enhancement to the town and Haywood County's cultural offerings. I understand that some downtown merchants expressed the festive pride flags being displayed on Main Street and implied that the festival was the work of outsiders and disrespected Native Appalachian values. But as a Native Appalachian, I am unwilling to have Appalachian values painted with a broad brush of bigotry. Plenty of us natives, along with transplants and tourists, delight in and privilege by a diverse community. As a straight white woman, I am an unearned privilege in our society. With that privilege, I would like to stand with and to stand up for those who are marginalized. As an interfaith minister, it is my chosen privilege to ally with LGBTQIA+ community. And when I saw the pride flags waving along Waynesville Main Street, it made my heart This is the shirt that I wore to this year's Haywood Pride on Main. It reads, "Bring on hugs." Hearing hugs from others because they may not always constitute the greatest joy of my life. The French Baywood priest Pierre Théard de Chardin said, "Joy is the most invaluable sign of the presence of God." I have seldom experienced more joy in my life than I have in the past two years. I've also met someone who looks loving and compassionate towards me throughout my whole life. Darling Strickland recently wrote about how havoc often occurs in shared, what? Shared in her account, said, "Before harm ever happens, the mind stops sitting, the other person is here." Label, a category, a threat. An object, an enemy. And when that reduction should happen, violence becomes equally destructive. I see Haywood Pride on Main as a big help of preventing or overcoming that currently so that we can meet each other as neighbors and we all have to care. I was taught that America is a melting pot, and I don't believe that truth. Rather than a melting pot that produces its own single lamb, human, smooth and delicious, I think America is more like a solid. It's a mix of colors, textures, aromatics, flavors, contributes with violence. And Pride on Main is a perfect example of that body of C Y. May we continue to appreciate, celebrate, and be nourished by the meaningfulness of community and culture.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Henson Sturgill.
I can follow that. But thank you, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Henson Sturgill and I live three miles away from where my mom grew up, out in Henson Cove. Last time I was in Henson Cove, I saw a Bible that had my family's history dating back six generations. And I mentioned this just to show that I'm local, seventh generation. My kids are eighth generation, pretty much within walking distance. That's crazy to me. As locals, I wanted to share, or take a minute to share some things I saw at Pride this year, my Bible reading, our church, some ice pops. Walking through the festival to find my churches, folks, I saw just what I'd expect. Local music, people selling crafts, face painting, kids painting rocks, and so many people I knew, and my wife knew, that my kids knew, just a bunch of locals. And I don't know if it was being greeted by the decorators, like the flag and stuff, from my friends, but I immediately felt a couple of them went around their own exploring. And I don't usually do that. My wife and I also went exploring, bought a bunch of stuff. I found a bar that was open, pretty awesome. Oh, and I had a grilled cheese sandwich from a food truck, so it was a great day. And so, I'm not sure how to put this, I don't have a bunch of time up here, but I want to thank the town of Waynesville and the emergency workers and everyone who helped make this event happen. Because it might seem small, but the whole combination of churches, ice pops, painting rocks, local crafts, live music, friends, neighbors, decorated downtown and feeling safe. It felt like the good parts of the mountains that I remember growing up in, and I'm so happy I could share with my kids. Thank you.
I have a sound check for a second. Just stop the clock for a second, please. Because I don't want to blow the ears out, but I want to make sure that the microphone's going.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Social media, it around, been hearing a lot of talk Appalachian values in regards to Pride on Main Street. So it got me to thinking. Indigenous people began settling these lands over 10,000 years ago. Cherokee nations formed from those ancestors. Armed white men and their families started settling here around 240 years ago. In 1838, the US government sanctioned genocide against the Cherokees. Thousands died just on the trail of tears alone. 1860s Appalachian men fought on both sides, one with the United States of America and one with the treasonous Confederacy that fought to preserve slavery. Local note, Robert Love was known to own 100 enslaved people. So there were slaves in the mountains. Let's get up to 1910. Women weren't even entrusted with the vote of mainly white men who passed laws over them. Maybe 1960, well, black people weren't allowed in the public schools. They had to have a separate school system, and they struggled to have their votes counted. Gay people have existed through all these years. They faced imprisonment, public scorn during much of that history. And I track to like, as James Brown screamed for inclusion when he sang in the 60s, "I'm black and I'm proud," so have the gay among us made a statement by coming out, which you know what that might entail, and waving a flag of inclusion, a flag that honors everyone. Value systems change through society and mostly for the better. Love every person, respect them for being who they are. That may be where we can start on Appalachian values. Because white Appalachian values, I'm white, have left a whole lot of destruction and hate in our wake. And let's move on and accept people for who they are.
I'm Mitzi and I want to thank the town of Waynesville and the police department and public safety workers and everyone who made Pride on Main such an amazing success. And as far as, when I first saw the flags on Main Street, I was racing around trying to get to the grocery store and I was kind of in a hurry. And I saw those flags and I was just taken aback. I literally skidded to a stop, I leapt out of my car and started photographing them with this ecstatic joy because I had never seen such a gesture of inclusion and welcome and safety. And I was just blown away. And I had seen this Main Street adorned with American flags on the Fourth of July and flags honoring Veterans Day and during Folk Mood, all of the flags that are international from all over the world coming together in this tapestry of just celebrating different cultures and how we all come together and enrich one another. And that's what makes this beautiful little town great. You all did something great with the flags on Pride on Main. And I don't know if you can comprehend just how great it was, but it truly was great. And so, you know, when I, when I heard that there were some businesses or merchants that wanted to push back against having the flags on Main, I was really taken aback by that and this, this debate about values. I just have something to say, that I am retired firefighter, 30 years of service, upholding to any house and every house in any danger and every time going in and valuing each life the same. And I know we have our group here, we have a retired police officer, we have veterans who have served our nation, we have your local grocery store clerk and other people who help each other and work in this community, helping each and every day. And we're here from all walks of life, just like all of you. And I just think it's time for everyone to be able to celebrate the gift of being welcomed into our community. And that's what the town of Waynesville gave us, and I want to say thank you.
Donna Browning. Ms. Browning.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Donna Browning, I'm originally here from Bulling, Georgia. I moved to Charlotte, Oregon to college, stayed there about eight years ago, and I'm retired. Charlotte Mackenberry Police Officer. So what brings me here today is, just as Mitzi had mentioned, inclusion. Whoever has a problem with our, with the flags on Main, we should be included. I, who we are, accept who we are, but not have any negative values. I was the same way with Mitzi, I just kind of had to win, like. Wow, thank you. Thank you, the town of Waynesville, for accepting and putting those flags up. Because yes, we do honor our veterans and we honor everybody. We just want to be included. We don't want to be excluded. The other thing that comes to my mind is, we are setting a future vision, not only for ourselves, but what about the younger generation? They need to be accepted. They need to be, they all need to be out here hiding in the closet. There needs to be more education on that, and it's okay for them to come out. There should be a closet for anybody, for anyone. And lastly of all, is we are part of the community. We help, we volunteer, we do whatever we can. So it's not like we're shying away from anything, don't we stand in line? We're not backing that. So, and we're not going back. So. But again, for allowing.
Candace Sladic. I'm sorry if I'm butchering that last Sladic. Okay.
All right. Hey, guys. Candace Sladic, I'm a Waynesville resident, and some of you know me. I'm not going to take your time, much time. The only thing I have to say is thank you. Thank you for including all of your community. Thank you for making a statement by putting, allowing the flag up town. Thank you for giving us a safe space. Wall Street was a, something people were like, oh my God. It felt safe back there. It felt safe the whole day.
I didn't prepare anything, I just want to say thank you because I, I.
I do live here in Waynesville, North Carolina. I'm a retired psychiatric nurse practitioner.
And so I just love this town. I'm so glad that we've been here since, since 2012. And this is a great place to live. And the flags also, I just thought they were beautiful and they were, the celebration in Wall Street felt great to walk, and there was so much joy and happiness and sharing, and I just enjoyed it so much, I wanted to say thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was going to be a part of a traditional program for inclusion in Waynesville. My name is Randy Outland, I'm a white Patricia, you just heard that I have been a resident of the town of Waynesville throughout the past year. We so enjoy living here and this wonderful mountain community and forward thinking in town. We continue to enjoy the events and activities presented and supported by the town of Waynesville each year, the Church Street Craft Fair. The album. Locally, part of the, as a penny boy. We recently came to town for the Pride event. Okay, thank you. We recently came to town. We came to town for the Pride event and were positively captivated by the happiness and smiles, as well as the feelings of love and joy being expressed by the vendors and participants, including the visitors to the festival. I felt a pride in our town for having the courage to allow these members of our community to feel free to share who they are with citizens and visitors attending this festival. Some in our community would argue that this event has a negative effect on traditional values of this community. I would say to those that every major religion on the planet, it is some form of what we call the golden rule, treat others as you would have them treat you. I welcome and encourage the town of Waynesville to continue staging and supporting the Pride event on an annual basis, knowing that the love and joy expressed by all of those involved has true traditional value.
You can, you can hold the mic if you want, if you don't want it to squill at you. It's, it's okay.
I'm gonna sit right here and see what happens.
That's perfect.
My name is Ralph Dean Rathbone, and I'm so glad to be here and so glad to see all of you. And want to thank you for this wonderful event where I was just blown away with the support that was here in my little hometown. I was born here, I come from eight generations of Rathbones. And to see that here, and to be able to walk and celebrate with these wonderful people was just the greatest. And I'm, I was here all my life, adult life, I traveled some with a spouse that was with Daco, y'all know Daco, and the Air Force. And so I came back here and came back to Western North Carolina to go to college. And I went to Beavard College and met so many wonderful members of the LGBT community at Beavard College. And that's where I got to know these loving, generous, selfless people. And they were friends of mine as we were students together. And then I went on to get my masters and came back to Beavard College and became an instructor of these wonderful kids. And I challenge you, if you don't know, if you're not acquainted, if you're not familiar with their worldview, with how they want to help people, with how they want to make the world a better place, they are making the world a better place. They're making Waynesville, North Carolina, a better place. And I want to thank all of you and challenge those of you who do not understand the LGBT community to get to know someone. You'll really be glad you did. Thank you.
First I'd like to thank the town council, the police, fire, and public works. I'm Lynn O'Hara, living in Cleveland. I grew up in Beavard. My father, Edie Reagan, ran a little catcher's store at Blountan, he farms. My grandfather was once the chief of police in Beavard. I ate Chrissy greens in the spring and derry in the winter. I had as locals you can get. And I have a gay daughter. Knew from a very young age she was going to be gay. When you have a little girl that asks for the boys' Happy Meal or only plays with cars and never dolls, you start to get a pretty clear picture. God made her and he doesn't make mistakes. Now, I'm not here to convince anyone what they should believe when it comes to religion. We all know how politicians use culture wars to piss against women and men. My dad's time, people were segregated and the Bible was used to justify it. And today, the LGBTQ+ community are marginalized and that same bigotry uses the Bible to justify it. With love, us, and Bible church. Picking and these are parts of fucking heaven. And if you don't think that's harmful, here's some facts. LGBTQ teens consider and attempt suicide at a rate approximately four times higher than the national average. Furthermore, 39% of LGBTQ youth considered suicide in the past year with a rate rising to 46% among transgender and non-binary youth. Think about my little girl. Why would anyone hate my little girl? Why would anyone do anything to push a child or an adult to harm themselves in the name of God and others? Just because somebody didn't like a certain flag on a public. I'd like to think we're gonna survive these times. The very fact I felt compelled to be here today fills me with dread, and I'm hopeful that the next generation will be able to think for themselves and not form an educated opinion of someone based on a political ad. So for now, I'd like to know. My daughter's safe, supported, surrounded, and lifted up by people who care about her. The two Pride festivals we've been seeing have been wonderful. Thank you, my daughter, and me, and I.
Carolyn Kimmitt. Carolyn Kimmitt, and I live in Weaver, I mean, I moved from Weaverville to Waynesville. I can only live in towns that begin with W and aville. Anyway, I moved here about two and a half years ago and it's taken me that long to kind of get to know my community and be charmed by it and feel joy from it, and also to get to know my LGBTQ plus community and neighbors. I'm also fortunate to have Gen Z or 20-something children and feel very fortunate also to have their friends who, some of whom are LGBTQ plus in my life. And it's bittersweet though because they bring me a lot of joy, but I also see the pain that they go through on a daily basis about feeling accepted, about culture at large. And so I just want to express gratitude to the town for allowing this to happen, encouraging it. And my personal feeling when I attended Pride this year and last year was just pure joy and unfettered positive emotion. I feel like it's a sign of embracing rather than tolerance, and tolerance is the minimum. Embracing and accepting is, is the ideal. And what Randy said, I'll end with that. The minute I walked in, I've never been in this room before, progress with vision, that is what I think this brought. Thank you.
Thank you, the town council for having this event. I came, moved here 20 years ago, and I have to say, I was in bigger towns, I worked in Charlotte and I worked in Wilmington. But when I moved here, I sort of thought, oh, well, they're going to be country rookies and they're not gonna, they're not gonna accept me. But as soon as I, I started working, I was working with gay, lesbian people, I was so surprised that it was so tolerated. And as we've gone along and not gone along, I have come to think of Waynesville as my, it's my love letter to Waynesville for what they have done. The first year of Pride last year was, I don't think I've ever been so happy in my life when I was a part of that. And this one was wonderful. And to see the flags, I was, I was so happy to see the flags. And to think that this town has always been, I've found this town has always been kind. And to think that this town has always been, I've found this town has always been kind. So anyway, thank you so much.
Kristy Johnson.
Hi, I'm Kristy Johnson, I live in Waynesville. Wow, right here, can you feel this joy and like the words, the joy, happiness, peace, kindness? And I just want to say thank you because your decisions helped bring that to this town. You sit there, you make big decisions that impact real lives. When I was at the Pride event last weekend, I had a young woman move up to me and she said, "Thank you for participating in the parade." She said, "When I was younger, I grew up here and I walked down Main Street with my girlfriend and I got spit on." She said, "To be here right now and feel like I get to be me, I can't even tell you what that does for me." And I don't, I was so struck because we looked around, everybody was being who they were. And isn't that what we want? Is being ourselves and embracing that. Because we only rise as humans and as a town by lifting each other up. Thank you for doing that.
All right, we're good. Specifically to my partner, I wasn't talking into the mic. My name is Max Greenback, I don't live in corporate town limits. But I did want to say thank you to the town council for the continued support. Now, because of some secret work, we're a city, we're a city, we're a city, we're a city, we're a downtown merchant. As the board of directors of Hayco Pride, Haywood County's first fully incorporated LGBTQIA+ 501(c)(3) established May 2024. We strive to meet the day-to-day needs of our community through mutual aid, provide events for all queer people and foster connections with members and businesses within Haywood County and beyond. Some of my favorite interactions have been with business owners in Waynesville. I'll even shout out all of our work, I'll be firm, trust me, if I had a bigger paycheck, y'all'd have all of them. While our work since incorporating has never expressed an interest in hosting a parade, we are grateful for the experiences Pride on Main has given us. For those members of the community that may be unhappy with our presence, I urge you to try two things. One, open up your heart. No one is taking away from your life, but instead showing you some of the most beautiful and kind souls I have ever had the pleasure of meeting. This idea that it's okay as long as I don't have to see it, was left behind between the 70s to the 90s. It is 2025, we will not go back to being silent. Option number two is simply don't go. Take the day off. I don't go to the Fourth of July celebrations. It's just because I don't like them. Fireworks are scary. But you also don't see me, the town council, without using fireworks at an appropriate time. Since I know that the argument of how this is dangerous and exposing our children is definitely going to make it rouse, let me clear. I cannot speak for every organization, but the only danger Hayco Pride provided was having a mobile cooling station and partnering with CCL to have a cooling site on the parade line for anyone who may be overheated, overstimulated, what have you. The only true dangers that were present in my eyes was allowing the incoming traffic on North Haywood Street simply because we had never known a bad actor to turn their vehicle into an oncoming parade, as well as allowing pastors to preach to children without speaking to their parents first. We are not rubbing sexuality in people's faces. The simple act of having a gathering and a parade is to feel truly seen by queer people and allies and to allow others to feel seen by their community.
Allison Coleman.
My name is Allison Coleman. I'm a business owner of Haywood County and I bought a house here last year. Might be able to tell from my accent, I am not local. I moved here from Texas. I come from, I live in this big tentific city, but I come from a family of cattle ranchers around small towns. And I always wanted to live in a small town. I always wanted to have like folks, hometown values. But I wanted a small town that was going to be open and accepting and wanting to work for growth. And when I started looking around Haywood County, people kept telling me the appellation is different, it's not going to be like a small town, you know, in Texas, which can be scary for people. I have a trans child who's 23. I wouldn't want them living in any of the towns I grew up around. Going to Pride here made me feel like they can visit me here. Just the other day, I went to lunch with someone and we were having a discussion and I mentioned the fact that, we're talking about sex. I love sex. She did not say much. And we were talking about the fact that she didn't like it. She didn't like the change. She didn't want to have any change. And I told her, I want my kids to stay here. I want, I have a 25-year-old, a 23-year-old, one straight, one not. I want both of them to be able to feel the same way walking down the street in the area I live in. I want them to feel safe coming to visit. Sit them off. And that takes all of the alcohol also because people don't come to visit this town and hide their house. Pride was great and there were so many people there. And I had one of the vendors booths, I loved being there. I'm the first of those artists, but I want this world all to be a changeable place. I wasn't selling anything, so it wasn't a matter of making money, but I talked to enough of my friends that were selling things, that all of those powerful people coming to Pride were buying things, they were spending money. They were going in the stores who were willing to be open and were welcoming to people. They're just as valued as customers, it's not just being people. One of the things that this person I was arguing with was saying was that, I didn't change time on mine. One of the things that she was saying was that, she tried to say, well, y'all tried to shove racial stuff down our throats and, you know, we haven't gotten over that either. And I'm like, so, yeah, mess up on that, it doesn't mean we stop climbing. You know, we made progress in racial stuff, we made progress in women's equality, we made some progress in everything we have a long way to go. And I'd love to see our town to be able to improve.
Sherry Teague. Sherry Teague.
Hello, I'm gonna try to get through this, I'm incredibly nervous. Can y'all hear me? My name is Sherry Lindsey. I have been resident of Haywood County for 15 years. I moved up here from South Florida in 2010. I'm here tonight to speak about the Pride on Main event that took place on June 28th. First and foremost, I would like to thank the town council, the police, fire and public works for making the Pride event possible. I would also like to thank all of the organizers and speakers that made Pride such a special day of celebration. I can honestly say that that was one of the most beautiful days of my life because for the first time in my 52 years, I felt seen. But more importantly, I felt safe. This is why I feel that it is so incredibly important to have events like this, especially in small towns. Not only am I a part of the LGBTQ plus community, but so are my two adult children. On June 28th, we celebrated acceptance, we celebrated inclusion, we celebrated community and we celebrated love. I was so overwhelmed with joy on that day. My heart was full and my spirit was lifted. I'm so very proud of the town of Waynesville for hosting this beautiful celebration. I would like to finish by reading a small poem that I wrote. Love, what a beautiful thing to celebrate. Love will always and forever triumph over hate. Who would take issue with celebrating love? Certainly not Mother Nature who sends us rainbows from above, no matter who tries to stop it or calls it a sin. On June 28th, in a small town called Waynesville, we proved that love will always win. Thank you all for your time and allow me to speak tonight.
Lynda Sexton. Lynda Sexton.
I'm Lynda Sexton and I live in Waynesville and y'all have seen me before. And I want to thank you, I was here the night when Anthony, when you read the declaration for the month of June to be Pride Month. And I felt so good and I was so happy to have my Pride colors out in my front yard for the entire month. And then the parade was just the piece de resistance. All these wonderful people said so many great things. I do want to say, since I'm wearing a Grace Waynesville t-shirt, we do welcome all and if anybody needs a church that they can go to, and feel welcome to the celebration of Waynesville. The other thing I want to ask, I would like to see radar signs up on Legion because nothing has gotten better since the last time I was here. And I don't have a crosswalk still and I'm still taking my life in my hands.
Dan Williamson. Okay. John Cole.
I should probably say the same thing that they just said because the people that have spoken have spoken far more eloquently than I will. But I'm not exactly a local of Waynesville. My dad was a Methodist preacher. We served at Western Carolina Conference and so Junealaska was our home every summer as long as I can remember. We had a house up here at Junealaska and Waynesville was as close to home as any place I have. After, after leaving home and going on to work, I was 29-plus years in the Army and another 19 years in the CIA. So I was all over the world doing things. But during all of that time, I knew I was coming back to Waynesville because this is where I wanted to live. My brother and, and my sister both built their houses in Waynesville 30 years ago. I was not quite that early, I was only like 27 years ago that we built a house up here. And we've lived here permanently now for about eight years. But Waynesville is always the place I wanted to come to. And I wanted to say again, like everybody else, thank you so much to the town of Waynesville and to the fire department, the police department, public works and the other elements of the Waynesville that have put this together, that supported Pride. I was pleased to be able to, to march in both the Pride last year and Pride this year. And it has a special meaning for me. I have a gay family member. I'm going to get to marry that gay family member to his partner later this year. That was a specific honor for me, for him to call me daddy and ask me to do that because he's not my natural son. I'm, we're a blended family. So that's going to be a really, really high moment for me. But I'm the classic straight white male in every other sense of the word. I've lived a life of privilege in that way. I haven't suffered being looked at or spit upon or described funnily or something like that or.